Good evening and welcome to the April 6, 2020 regular meeting of the School Committee of the Town of Foxborough. We're going to begin this. We have with us remotely Brent Ruder and Rob Canfield and our school business administrator, Mr. Yukna.
Dr. Tarasi.
And Dr. Tarasi from Leslie University who will be presenting our teaching and learning highlight in a few minutes. And Dr. Einsel will also join us remotely. We're going to begin the meeting with our COVID-19 update. Dr. Berdos?
Sure. So I don't have as much to update from last week. I'll just reiterate really my communication that I had sent out with all families and that is we continue to be so incredibly proud of our teachers and our staff and our families. They are doing an exorbitant amount of work at home and the communication going back and forth between families and teachers. We've received some really good feedback and some positive highlights and stories that have been shared from parents with teachers. And again, we are still continuing to seek feedback as we move into more of our remote learning plan to be able to make improvements on that each week. We sent out a quick survey to families and that was really just to get a quick pulse on if it was the right amount, if it was too much, it was too little, the amount of time that's being spent. And we realized it was really quick and it was sent out very quickly, but it was to help us with our teachers as they're meeting online and planning and wanted to get just at least a quick idea. And then we'll continue to send out surveys that are going to be more granular in order to get more feedback, more specific information to help us with our planning. Alison, did you want to add anything to that?
No, I think what Dr. Berdos was referring to is we had our online team meetings with our grade levels and our content teachers. So knowing they were going to be putting together their plans for next week, we wanted to try to get as much feedback as possible to inform those plans. We didn't want to wait until Friday to do the survey and then they would have missed all their planning meetings.
Makes sense.
So it was quick, but we'll continue to listen and to get that feedback. At the same time, when I'm thinking about how we're planning all of our remote learning, something that we've obviously never done before, I started to think about our own students and whether they're student athletes or whether they're in the band or the orchestra or they're in plays, there's really, there's no plan book. There's not a script, there's not a score for this, and so it really is all of us learning together. So we really appreciate the families being flexible and the teachers being flexible as we all learn together through this. At the same time, last week, we did suspend our use of Zoom and that is not something that was, you know, an isolated incident to Foxborough. We saw in the news that that was happening across the country, more as K-12 schools and universities are starting to use and move online to provide remote learning. And so as a result of that, Zoom has increased their security measures. We've seen that in the last several days and we're going to best prepare our staff to be able to move forward. So we wanted to slow down in order to speed up and to make sure that we have best practices in place and to ensure that everyone's comfortable with all of the safety features that have been added before we move forward. And I think that pretty much covers it unless there's anything else to add.
No, I think just one of our goals for this week was to fully launch our COVID-19 webpage. And when we were here last Monday evening, we hadn't completed the high school portion. So all of that has been completed. We've also added additional resources just about COVID-19 and health resources for people if they need them. And the update on our food service program, which is now available to all students and is now available twice a week instead of just on Thursdays, it will be Mondays and Thursdays. So lots of new information is getting added there daily. Also, the remote learning plan is being updated each week as we learn more information. So this week, we will have new goals that will be up there, timeline of our accomplishments this week, many of which Dr. Berdos just indicated. I just would say one more thing. We've been hearing from students and teachers and feedback from parents. We have seen everything from a kindergarten or first grade student finding where their teacher lives to leave them a note saying how much they miss them and they miss being in class with them, to having a seventh grader, you know, actually brought to tears because they were so happy to see their teacher. So it just reminds us that it's the connection that is the most important and we are really determined to figure out how to best maintain that, thus the work around our video conferencing options and working to make sure that's safe and secure.
Yeah, because we know that those connections, that helps bring some normalcy and the safety and security for our students.
Do we have any timeframe or expectation of when we might be able to return to the Zoom platform?
I would say just, we just need this week to be able to have everything in place.
Give teachers a little bit more training and be, you know, extra secure.
Correct.
In our usage. Okay, all right. Very good. And in the meantime, our students are getting some face-to-face through Teams?
Yes, they are having some face-to-face through Teams. It just doesn't have the platform to where you can see as many tiles at a time on that. So we want to just make sure that everyone is, you know, comfortable with being able to make sure that all those security features are enabled.
I think we all agree on that. Does anyone have any questions on the update? Anyone at home? Any question? Okay, all right. So is it ready? And the twice a week for food services is Monday from 12 to 2.
Correct.
And Thursday from 12 to 2.
At the Ahearn.
For any family.
Any family.
In Foxborough who has children in Foxborough Public Schools.
Correct.
And needs a weekly food package, twice a week, 12 to 2, door number 3.
Door number 3 at the Ahearn. Also on our website, you'll see there are opportunities through the Hakamakwai on other days and also at Gillette Stadium, I think, until the 10th.
Yeah, I think you're right.
I'm almost sure.
And we've been seeing our families, I know Bill could speak to this, but we've seen an increase in the three weeks, particularly even with today being the first day for the second, as a second day during the week.
I know Janice Watts posted on Facebook, what is going into the meal packages that are going out to our families and it looked very well-rounded and nutritious and also, you know, fun for the kids. So I think it's a, I commend our food services department for working so hard with the Foxborough Food Pantry to provide this much-needed service in our community right now.
I don't know if Bill had anything else he wanted to add. Bill?
Yeah, I mean, we started off on 3/19. We did 72 families or students at that time. The following week, we were up to 80. Last week, we were up to 94. Yesterday was the first, I mean, today was the first Monday, but we really didn't announce it until yesterday late and we had 63 kids that were served this time around. We have set up the food service group into two distinct groups to keep them separate from each other, just to make sure that, you know, we can keep a healthy group, one no matter what happens here. And as Tina, as you said, the meals basically are based on the required nutrition plans. So they are, you know, fairly significant in what's being done, but also in the fact that it isn't, you know, just a sandwich type of thing. There's quite a bit involved with them. I've been there a couple of times during the distribution to work with the ladies and they've done a great job. So I think I give them a lot of credit for it. I know it's not easy and I know there's a lot of families that are in a lot of need right now. So, you know, working with the state and the federal government on the funding side of it, as far as the food product goes, I think this, you know, should hopefully continue to be a successful program.
Thank you, Bill. Any other questions?
Tina, I just had one clarifying point, just to go back to the Zoom.
Oh, yes, please.
While we're not using it for the live video conferencing, teachers are still able to record themselves.
Okay.
And post those videos. So that's an important clarification.
So they are getting some face-to-face, well.
Maybe I'm reading a story to you and you can see me, but I'm not seeing you live.
So they can see their teacher.
Correct.
So we're not just getting assignments via email, you're getting some verbalization of the lesson from kindergarten on up?
It varies depending on the person, but yeah, they're all over the place, yes.
That's great, yeah.
You'll see read aloud stories by the teachers setting up kindergarten.
Yes.
That's nice.
I'm sure the kids really must really enjoy that.
They look forward to seeing their teacher's face.
That's great. All right. So next on our agenda is our open public comment. We had one comment come in through the school committee inbox. It's from a Foxborough Public School student, Joseph Garrity. And we are going to address, Joey's question has to do with April vacation week. I'm going to read his comment, but we are going to address this in a later agenda item. So, but this is the part of the agenda that we do this at. So here is my revised public comment for tonight's meeting. I do, one, I do agree that the best option is to continue remote learning during the entire week of April vacation during Monday, 4/20, since Marathon Monday is postponed until September, while people can't travel, see people, or go to places during that week with stay-at-home orders in effect for the month of April. Why not get in some days that count while you have to stay home anyway? And then hopefully in June, when the weather is nice, students and staff are free to return to your normal life and can be out of school to enjoy it. Also, will remote learning on Good Friday, 4/10, be considered as a half-day or a full day? Second part of his question is, two, if we do continue with remote learning during April vacation and take Good Friday off with no online learning, would the last day of school be June 17th or 18th with the one snow day? Joe, always keeping us on our toes schedule-wise. If we don't continue with remote learning during April vacation and take Good Friday off with no online learning, would the last day of school be Tuesday, June 23rd or Wednesday, June 24th? The reason I'm questioning either dates for both weeks is because of whether remote learning still happens on this Friday, 4/10, for Good Friday. So that part of the question, I think we can answer because Good Friday is in our school calendar as a half-day, which does count, as a full day against our 185 days school year.
180 days, yes.
180 days plus the snow days, yes. So there will be remote learning on Friday. We can answer that part of this question. And then as to your, I know Joe's watching at home, so as to your, the first part of your question, I think we'll reserve our discussion on that until a little bit later in the meeting and follow the agenda, if that's okay with you.
Sure.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Joey, for the question. And just a reminder to the public at home that during this public health crisis, if anyone does want to participate via open public comment, send, as is indicated on our agendas that are published electronically now on the Foxborough, Town of Foxborough website, you can send a comment or question to the school committee inbox or call the main office, the central office, at 543-1660 and leave a message. That was the only comment we received for tonight's meeting. Okay. So next on our agenda, we have approval of minutes from last Monday's meeting from March 30th, 2020. And thank you to Janet for doing such a thorough job of watching our meeting on video and accurately representing it. I didn't see anything that needed to be changed, but did anybody else with eagle eyes see anything that needed to be corrected? Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve these minutes?
I'd move to approve these, the minutes for March 30th.
I'll second. Thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving our March 30th meeting minutes?
Aye.
500. Thank you. Excellent. All right. So next up, we have our teaching and learning highlight, trauma-sensitive schools. And I think it's, given what is going on right now, this is very appropriate and timely and I'm looking forward to hearing about it. Why don't you lead us in?
I would be happy to. So a couple of years ago, we started to offer the graduate courses for trauma-informed schools. And there's actually four graduate courses. And we've continued to increase the Trauma I course and then add the second one, the third, and the fourth. And we're now at a point where we've had 25 teachers in Foxborough complete all four of these courses. And these courses are designed to really look at the trauma and social-emotional well-being of our students and what is trauma. And it might not be what you might think that it could be. It comes in so many different forms and the nature of trauma in school-aged children is really quite broad. And so to have our own teachers more knowledgeable about the research and being able to meet their needs in a classroom and to think about things very differently. It really is about meeting the needs of the whole child and thinking about their social-emotional well-being in addition to the academics, whether it's their learning, their behavior, and what causes certain behaviors, so we can definitely meet their needs. So we have with us this evening, Dr. Sandra Einsel, our Director of Student Services.
Hi, Dr. Einsel.
As well as Dr. Sal Tarasi from the, he's the Director of Leslie Institute for Trauma Sensitivity.
Thank you for joining us.
And then it looks like we have Pam Anderson, one of our participants in the course.
Yep.
So I'll turn it over to Dr. Einsel and let her give a little bit more information.
Let me introduce Sal Tarasi. He is the Director of Leslie University's Institute for Trauma Sensitivity, where he is also one of the faculty of the Graduate School of Education, where he teaches quantitative and qualitative research in the doctoral program. He is an educator with over 45 years of experience in public education, is a teacher, a counselor, and a central office administrator. Take it away, Sal.
Well, thank you very much. I'm very pleased to be with you this evening to celebrate the wonderful achievement of the staff in Foxborough and the administration, as well as the school committee. These certificate recipients that we're kind of honoring tonight, they really need to be commended for their commitment that they've made to social-emotional learning. They've completed a program that's designed to provide them with a deep understanding of the nature of trauma in school-aged children, and they have become extremely knowledgeable about the research regarding the causes of childhood toxic stress. They've become knowledgeable about how it manifests itself in school situations, how it interferes with children's behavior, with their ability to learn, and with their social-emotional well-being. And most importantly, they've begun to implement strategies and practices that are effective in creating an emotionally safe learning environment. The program that we have offered them at Leslie consists of four graduate-level courses. The first course examines research on the impact of traumatic experience and how it affects students. The second course delves into strategies and practices that teachers can implement at the classroom level. By the time we get to the third course, we're talking about whole-school change, the nature of the process of change, and how to work at the level of the entire school. And then the last course actually requires the participants to complete an action research project in which they do research within their own school environment, and that research is designed to inform their practice and direct the future course of the initiative in their school. So, you know, at one level, certainly we congratulate the participants of the program. But beyond congratulations to the individual certificate recipients, I really need to acknowledge the district itself. It's wonderful and important for teachers to be concerned about social-emotional learning. But it is a truly remarkable thing to see how this work has been led at the district level, from the superintendent throughout the administrative team, the support of the school committee, truly, the Foxborough Public Schools is changing their educational practice in a deep and meaningful way, and in my opinion, is unquestionably a statewide leader in this area. I can't say enough about that, and I know I'm echoing the sentiments of our lead clinical faculty person, Joe Restuccia. The social-emotional well-being of students has always been important, but needless to say, never more so than in the current, the current times, which speaks for themselves. So really, kudos to the entire district for what you're doing. I can't stress that enough and certainly to the 20, we had 25 participants in Foxborough and one who completed the course on Leslie campus in residency model that we offered. It's just a wonderful thing that you're doing and it's really, it's really been the talk of Leslie University at some of our staff meetings, I can assure you. So thank you, Sandra.
I wanted to just tell you that Joe Restuccia, who has worked with us for probably over 10 years, he's worked in our team chair, I mean, in our team programs, which are programs for our social-emotional students. He's a school psychologist, is over 25 years, has worked with a number of different schools and school districts. He has served as a consultant with Sal's program at Leslie University. And he's, I didn't know all this, but he's co-author of the Helping Traumatized Children Learn, volumes 1 and 2. He has consulted with the Department of Psychiatry, Mass. General, presented program-model research findings at the American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry. He presented at the Departments of Education in Massachusetts, Wisconsin, West Virginia, and Washington, as well as the University of Wisconsin on related topics. He's the lead clinical faculty person for the Leslie Institute for Trauma Sensitivity. He holds a Master's in Education from Harvard, an MBA from Boston University, and a BA for Yale University. And he asked me to read his statement for him. "I am truly sorry that I cannot be here in person this evening to celebrate the accomplishments of these educators. I have come to know and respect them all. The receipt of the certificate in trauma sensitivity attests to each educator's understanding of the impacts of traumatic experience on the student's learning, also, more importantly, what can be done to support our student's success. It also attests to the leadership and support in the district to make these courses available in a manner that has allowed so many of them to complete them. This cohort in Foxborough has consistently demonstrated a willingness to engage in the work, not only in our class discussions, but in the work that they do with their students and their colleagues every day. They are knowledgeable, highly skilled, internal resources for any classroom or school where they work, and it says wonderful things about the Foxborough district that they choose to work here. Congratulations to all of them."
And the other thing that I would add too is that those are the 25 that have completed all four of the graduate courses. So actually, I think it was four years ago that we started, but the number of teachers that have taken either Trauma I or Trauma II, we still have so many more teachers that have taken those graduate courses. It's, these are our first 25 to have completed all four.
I see we have some more members who've joined our meeting. Can you introduce everybody who's up there for us?
Sure. So, Les, if I can see Rose Farrar, she's our elementary team chair. Diana Parr, our preschool coordinator. We have Kim Catan Skelly, she's our middle school team chair. And we have Kim McDowell, who is our out-of-district coordinator from the middle school. I think I've got everyone there.
I think you have everybody now. Thank you all for joining. Wonderful. Okay.
So Dr. Einsel, was there anything else that you wanted to add?
Me, as being this student services person, I had that, I had a great time in all those classes, meeting people outside of special education at all levels and really being able to see how it really changed their practice. In fact, one of the preschool teachers, Elizabeth Bean, told me that it's changed her practice and Diana can attest to that. It's just, she has more knowledge about who's in front of her. And that has been a very, very positive experience from preschool all the way to through high school.
Do all of the teachers who are joining us remotely, have they all gone through the program?
Yes, those are, those are some of our 25 there.
Excellent. Well, thank you all for devoting the time to go through the program. And maybe each of you could speak a little bit to how you're leveraging what you learned in your classroom experience or in your day-to-day work. Hear me? Okay. I don't know.
Diana Parr, do you want to, you want to speak a little bit about particularly where Dr. Einsel mentioned how it's changed your practice?
Her microphone's muted.
She's muted, we need to.
Can you unmute, Diana?
Yes, and sorry, and my Wi-Fi is shoddy too, so.
Well, we forgive you, no worries.
So how it's leveraged us in the classroom. I think as a lifetime, as a lifetime learners, we all learn new practices as we go and the times change and the kids change and the way we teach has to change as well. And I feel like in the past 10 years or so, the kids that we've been getting have been exposed to so much more different kinds of things. And taking the trauma courses has helped us understand how trauma is so different for every single kid that walks through your door, that you don't know how big or how small whatever trauma that they have has impacted them. What might upset me might not upset someone else, but what might upset one of the little ones, I don't know, not getting to say goodbye to dad, or dad being away on a business trip, or mom being away on a business trip, how that impacts them. We're surrounded by trauma. And so when we started the preschool, having this new lens to look at trauma as what everybody comes through the door that we don't know about, has really changed the way in which we engage kids and we welcome them into our programs, so that we can set them up with positive self-images, strategies to help with stress and trauma, and to help them be available to learn as they move forward through the, through the grade levels.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that.
Actually, a number of our folks that have joined us are part of our special education today, so.
Well, this is, it's going to flow in. I didn't mean to put them on the spot, but it is definitely going to flow into our next agenda item on special education.
So maybe Kim McDowell, I know she was, she has been one to take the courses too, so she might, for her, to share her perspective.
Can Kim hear us?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Just wanted, Kim, if you'd like to share your perspective by being one of the ones who's become certified for the trauma-sensitive schools.
Yes, I can say it's really enriched my practice, my day-to-day work as the facilitator for the middle school mental health team and one of the staff in the district that actually is working with mental health staff district-wide about how it's really, really the work, the trauma, what you're learning in the trauma class, similar to what Diana is saying, like, it's really the perspective of the student in terms of what their trauma is and how it affects them. But it was just so helpful to learn just the effects of the trauma, how it affects each classroom, how we can have more trauma-sensitive schools, and then in turn, trauma-sensitive buildings, and then a trauma-sensitive community. So I think that we really have come full circle with these four classes. And our last class was Sal, and I have to thank you, Sal, for being such an incredible professor and instructor in this fourth class. You really took the concept of research and made it, made it come alive for us as learners. And we really were able to collect data and, you know, show to our class how we could actually become an agent of change as it relates to trauma in the students that we work with and what we can do moving forward to help in, within our school and within our whole community regarding trauma sensitivity and working with kids who've experienced trauma. I think it's really important in my mind to think of us, we really don't know which student may have trauma, and we really don't know the intensity of that trauma. So we really are looking at all students and having a very, very trauma-sensitive lens as we teach, counsel, do anything within our school. So I really, truly enjoyed them all and I learned a lot from them. So I think we'll have a lot to share to our school community as a result.
Excellent. Thank you. Alison, do we have professional development planned around this, or have we already had some and I've already forgotten about that?
We have lots of professional development around social-emotional learning, but I think the testimony of these people really speaks to the commitment of our individual teachers to seek the graduate-level training, which is above and beyond what we do in our regular professional development offerings. And to see the stamina to go for graduate courses on the same topic just really speaks to, number one, the quality of the program that they are putting out for teachers. Number two, the amount that they're learning and the return on the investment they're getting. And number three, the value they think it's really adding to their practice as professionals is really exceptional.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for our panel? Thank you for coming.
Would you like me to publicly recognize as far as the participants that completed this?
Yes, I would, absolutely. So I'm glad you said something. I did mean to.
And not to go through and to give the school or the role, but what I will say is it ranges from elementary classroom teachers, guidance counselors, high school content-level teachers. So Lisa Alden, Rachel Barrett, Elizabeth Bean, Dr. Einsel, Shelley Pharaoh, Jaclyn Scholes, Barbara Gimba, Lauren Bailey, Holly Gaffers, Julie Grant, Jennifer Gray, Kirsten Howden, Laura Kolbeck, Ichbal Kirker, Carrie LeBlanc, Lisa McEnell, Kim McDowell, Nina Maury, Lori Normandin, Megan O'Connor, Stephanie O'Keefe, Cassie Rozelle, Kristin Siddle, Ricky Sidoric, Callie Theodos, and Samantha Walsh.
Thank you for listing all the names and thank you to all our educators who participated and took those graduate-level courses. And I would imagine that what is going on right now, and not even imagine, I know that what's going on right now is very, in our world, is very, it's traumatic to me, so I'm sure it is traumatic to our children. And having teachers who have this training, who are able to leverage that, you know, as we move forward with our remote learning and reach out in this way and help one another and I imagine help their fellow teachers cope with what's going on, is a real advantage to our students to be able to have this background and training and be able to use it right now during this challenging time in our community.
And we're continuing to offer the courses going forward too.
Yeah, and I would say that's one of, again, the testament to how great the program is, is the word of mouth that's happened between teachers, that these strategies have had a powerful impact on their interactions with students and change their practice. That keeps it going. More people want to take them.
That's great. That is great news. Brent, Rob, do you have any questions at home? Keep track of everybody.
I don't have a question.
I don't have a question. I just want to thank all of the educators for pursuing this. And I know it is something that is a priority for our district. So thank you very much for helping us reach our goals.
Thanks, Rob. Brent?
Yeah, I was, I was just going to ask anybody on the, the panel just for your perspective on, folks who've gone through this training, is there a level of, I guess, comfort and ability to pass on what you've learned to those teachers who are interested but maybe couldn't be part of the cohort this time around?
Go ahead, Kim.
I, I think that, that's a very good question. And I think that as we sort of structure it moving forward, I think there are several of us who would probably feel comfortable teaching other, other staff. I know there are myself and one other person. I don't know if there are others. I am only aware of myself and Lauren Bailey, who's the guidance counselor at the middle school, that Joe had spoken with us about being adjunct professors and trying to teach the first two classes. So we took the first two classes twice, one for the purpose of our own education and once for the purpose of instruction. And I haven't repeated, we have, I know I haven't, I'm not, I don't believe that Lauren has repeated the third for the purpose of instruction, but we certainly did for the first two. And I know that that was something that was discussed, but it's been some time now. But I think it's a very good question in terms of how we roll it out and educate more and more of our staff, because it's really taking off in a very positive way.
That's great.
Very true. I think that the idea is to have trainers within the system so that you can kind of keep, as people come into our system and others leave, that we can actually continue the work. The other thing that is really interesting about this is the, people in the different buildings have developed their own little cohort, so they're very supportive. If something has happened with one of their students, they feel very comfortable reaching out and talking to their colleagues, not only in that little cohort, but let's say it's a younger student. They'd reach down to the preschool, or they'd reach down to the elementary level and say, "Can you help with this? Because this, this child may be a middle-schooler, but is acting much more like an elementary school student." So I think that it, it really has developed a really strong friendship and collegial manner throughout the system. And to me, it's very exciting. People really enjoy, they've enjoyed the work.
If I can add one thing to that, I, I want to support what, what the people from the district have said. As, as much as I think, Leslie, you know, we do a wonderful job, we come in and we teach the courses, if we're doing our work properly, our job is to make ourselves irrelevant. You now have district capacity which you have built up, and you have expertise in your district, you have the people that can design and conduct your own professional development. And, you know, as, as much as we enjoy, you know, doing the work, we, we need to, you know, make ourselves, as I say, less relevant, because you, you can carry the ball now. You have some great, great people there.
And I feel like it's... I'm sorry. No, go ahead, Diana.
Please go ahead, Diana.
I feel like, I always talk about how collaborative the district is, but doing the trauma piece from all the way, from the bottom to preschool all the way up, and having mix of people taking those courses, you make relationships, and it has spread collaboration up and down. Not just in your own grade level, but I really feel like it's, it's spread it. So you have, as Sandra mentioned, you can go down to the preschool to get information, and the preschool can go up and share with transitions and things around, around trauma.
That just benefits our students all the more.
Yes.
For sure. Well, thank you for bringing this forward as our teaching and learning highlight, you know, especially tonight when we're going to be going through our, our special education program update. So this was very informative.
And good timing.
Yes, excellent timing. And thank you, everybody, for joining us remotely. Stay safe, stay healthy.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm sure some of them will be staying with us.
Very much, everybody.
I think most of them will be staying with us. Should we thank Dr.?
Oh, Dr. Tarazi, yes.
Dr. Tarazi, thank you so much for, for everything you had to say about the district and especially about our wonderful educators who went through your program. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up on our agenda is our special education program update. And this is the time of year that we typically have, well, we always have our special education program update. And I think it's particularly appropriate right now, because this is something that we're dealing with a lot of different issues right now. And I think going through the, the presentation that Dr. Einzel has for us tonight will be beneficial to a lot of people in the community, as well as the committee. Would you like to lead her in?
This is my last school committee meeting, because as you know, I'm retiring in, in June. And I really wanted the, the team that I work with, that I, I couldn't do my job without them, to be a part of this presentation tonight, because they really are an incredible team. And I want you guys to all unmute so that you're, you're ready to go. I think that, I think that Dr. Burdos did introduce everyone, but I'm going to have them introduce themselves once again, because we were, you know, like, we can hear some of what you said, but not everything. I'm Sandra Einzel, Student Services Director and the preschool.
I'm Diana Parr, preschool coordinator at the Borough Elementary School.
Hi, I'm Rose Ferraro. I'm the elementary team chair.
Hi, I'm Kim Skelly, the middle school team chair.
Hi, I'm Pamela Anderson, the high school department chair.
Hi, everyone. I'm Kim McDowell, district-wide team facilitator. Nice to be here.
I wanted to thank you first, all of you, for letting us do this remotely because of this whole virus. I know that it's, Mike Weber, I also want to thank, he's, he was working with me tirelessly, trying to get the video going, the PowerPoint going, and then all of us on Zoom. So thank you very much for, for letting us do it today. Over the past couple of years, we've been talking about transition. Transition from, from, you know, public school into adult services, and then from, from, you know, Diane Galanti's program, from the 14 to 16, 18-year-old kids that really were in content still, and then we were moving them into more vocational training. Then we talked last year about preschool to elementary, a transition, and transition from elementary to middle, and middle to high school. This year, we're going to do something different. We're really going to talk about what is special education. So in, in your packet, you will have a, you have the eligibility process. It's part of the, it's part, you have an initial and a three-year reevaluation process where everyone sits down, decides what kind of testing is going to be done. It might be psychological, might be educational, might be speech and language, occupational therapy, PT. All those professionals come together with the family, and they talk about, they summarize what their, what their findings are, and they go through the, the, this, the, I'm thinking of this, the spreadsheet about, it's in your packet as well, about eligibility process. They have to answer these questions. Does the student have a disability, one or more disabilities? And then that lists the state of disabilities. If yes, they go to question two. Is this making effective progress in schools? Were we about, as you can see, the student would have to continue to make progress only with social, with special education services. If no, is the lack of progress the result of the disability? This is the next part. Does the student require specially-designed instruction in order to make effective progress in school? Or do they need a related service, OT, P, P, speech and language, in order to access the curriculum? If yes, this goes into what, what special ed is. So I'm just going to have a brief, I think we're ahead of, keep going there, Mike. One more, one more. We're going to talk about special, special education. It's defined as specially-designed instruction to meet the unique needs of the student or related services that are necessary to access the curriculum. We can go one more. Specially-designed instruction means that there is a need to adapt the content, the methodology, the delivery of the instruction, and/or performance criteria for a student to make effective progress. Okay, the next one. Related services are considered specially-designed instruction. And one, and they can be, there's many of them. Speech and language, like we've talked about, occupational therapy, physical therapy. We have some students with some visual problems. We have some students with hearing problems. So we have people coming in, teachers of the deaf, audiologists coming in to support our students and our staff doing this kind of work. So one of the things we want to do tonight is show you what it's like, the specially-designed instruction at each level. So Mike is going to start the video of the preschool. I want you to watch it carefully. And Diana then is going to talk to you about what that is.
Look, how do you want us to sing? Do you want to clap, stomp feet, dance, arms up, or jump? Jump? All right, ready, go jump, jump, sing, clap, ready?
Hello, Jacob, hello, Jacob, hello, Jacob, we're glad you came to school.
Hey, good choice, you know. Kayden, good job, high five. High five. Good. Landon, high five. Who's this?
Okay, so we're going to, we're going to let Diana now talk about what you just saw. Diana?
Aren't they amazing? And fun to look at? And fun to, definitely fun and rewarding to work with. So specially-designed instruction begins with our youngest learners in Foxborough at the preschool level. They come to us at age three, most of them, a lot of them. So they're just babies when we get them. And they have, they're identified with disabilities through the process that Sandra just described. Specially-designed instruction in the preschool looks like play to the layperson. Play is a young child's work, and is the best way for them to learn. Our preschool program uses play to deliver specially-designed instruction to lay a solid foundation of the skills necessary for students to progress to a more academic, more school levels. Our specially-designed instruction focuses on the individual's skill deficits, goals, and benchmarks in each child's IEP, such as communication, which could cover articulation, expressive skills, receptive skills, social skills, the area of cognition, where we focus on developing attention, memory, reasoning skills, and problem-solving skills. Adaptive areas, including self-helps, from anything like eating, to toileting, to dressing, self-regulation and sensory difficulties, and behavior regulation. Fine motor skills involve writing and cutting and visual perceptual work, and gross motor skills around walking, running, climbing stairs, using the playground equipment, and navigating the entire environment. It is the specialized instruction that provides the support needed for students to develop perseverance, self-regulation, and independence in the life of the school and beyond. Some examples are smaller group and individualized instruction, one-on-one, additional classroom support through teachers and student ratios, visual supports, high-tech, low-tech, physical supports such as prompting, modeling, task analysis, reinforcement, discreet trial, pre-teaching, post-teaching. All of these are facilitated by the teaching staff and embedded into the child's play activities and adjusted or modified per their individual needs. So you saw the video. And that is a group of four students who are at a small group circle time activity led by and supported by both the teacher and the assistants. They use music and movement along with individuals, visual supports, reinforcement, modeling, repetition, and prompting to promote participation in the activities. These students are learning how to attend and be part of a small group with their peers, take turns, wait their turn, increase their ability to participate both physically, attentionally, and verbally. Gross motor imitation skills, communication with peers, making choices, greeting and responding to greetings. And there's so much more. And that was just a little blip in the life of our preschoolers. So now I'm going to let you hear from Rose Ferraro at the next step in elementary.
I think we're going to do the, Mike's going to put on the video. Yep, here we go.
I. Stop and think. Oh. We're not eating, stop. We want to.
Can I? Can I have?
Can I have?
Banana? Can I have banana?
Three words. Yes?
Yes.
You? And? We're going to jump into a couple glued sounds, okay?
U N E, N U N.
Excellent.
I N K, D N K. U N K, J N K. A N G, C.
Awesome. We're doing some glued sounds that are also our close syllable exceptions, so keep that in mind.
I L, the wild I.
Beautiful.
O S T, post.
Excellent.
So as students move into kindergarten and through the fourth grade, we continue to build upon the foundational skills that Diana just spoke about. Special instruction at the elementary level still looks very much like play, but it begins to take on a more targeted academic focus, allowing students to access the general education curriculum at various entry points. As you saw in the video, specialized instruction at the elementary level can look like a speech therapist utilizing a game to teach a student how to use an assistive technology device so that they can better communicate with their peers and staff, and in that way, be able to access the curriculum. It can also look like a special education teacher leading a small group multisensory phonics lesson, such as those taught through the Wilson Language Program, to help students achieve grade-level reading proficiencies. This type of instruction begins to take on a less play-based form as the students move through the grade levels, but continues to focus on providing students with access to the curriculum. So next, we will be hearing from the middle school.
We're going to have the film first, I think. Yep. Serena, you're doing a wonderful job. Can you tell us what month we're in? We haven't seen you this month. What month are we in?
March.
March. Excellent work. Nice job. Now can you turn around and tell the class the whole date? What's today?
Today is?
March?
2020.
Excellent. Nice job, Serena. Take a seat for me, kiddo. Well done.
So we know closed syllable, vowel consonant silent E, open syllable, and consonant L at the end of multisyllabic word.
In this word, right? Okay, so just circle it, right? So, so, yeah, it would be a vowel consonant exception, right? Because it doesn't say I, it says the. Closed, only exception, vowel consonant.
Aiden, can you share a lesson to Aiden? His example of what made him annoyed?
My sister Polly kept poking me.
Sister kept poking him. He felt annoyed. Yeah.
Yes.
Which example?
Little sister's annoying.
Little sisters can be annoying, yes. What do you have, the other?
I felt annoyed when I had to clean my room.
When you had to clean your room?
Yeah.
You were annoyed because you had to clean your room. Good one. Yeah, that was a good one.
So Kim and I would like to share with you how in the middle school, students continue to build on those foundational skills that Diana and Rose have both referenced. My piece that I would like to talk to you about are the two clips of our small, sub-separate classroom, two separate lessons. And what you, what you saw in that, those small groups with, were, they were facilitated with the special educator and the speech and language pathologist teaching lessons that help foster social skills in our students. The instruction also helps students strengthen their life skills as well. These lessons provide the structure, routine, repetition, and consistency that our students need to better develop their skill sets. These lessons teach academics, but they also teach students self-determination and self-advocacy skills, vital skills that foster increased independence. Related service providers such as speech and language and occupational therapy are also integrated into lessons within the sub-separate program throughout the school day. And this is one of two sub-separate programs. Well, actually, it's our main sub-separate program at the Ahern. And now I'd like to hand it over to Kim, who will share with you the other piece of the video in terms of further explanation of how specialized instruction is delivered at the middle school level. So Kim, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you. So the other part that was in the middle school video clip was another one of our fabulous middle school special ed teachers. She was working with a small group of students where the focus is on strengthening their literacy skills through a multisensory specialized reading program. through a multi-sensory specialized reading program. And just like in all the other groups, all of our groups are carefully designed and they're linked to each of the individual students' IEPs. And progress is constantly being monitored through ongoing data, different collection tools, which of course is necessary to track student progress in all areas of instruction and to ensure that there is growth continuously happening. So next you'll hear from Pamela Anderson, or you'll see the clip from the high school.
All right, I'm Molly Smith, or Smitty, whichever you prefer. Today we're gonna learn how to do a general grade. It's pretty simple. By the end of this, you should be able to follow the steps. It's only a two-step process, remember that. You're gonna take your white, put it over the red. So now that the white takes it out.
Okay, so you got the blue one. Oh.
Mm-hmm.
It's a pattern.
Yes.
Then you get the red one. You have certain...
You're doing good. Jabari, you're really good. At the end, we are going to use a rubber band to tie it at the end. Typically, we use a hair tie, but seeing as this is string and I don't own any, we're gonna be using rubber bands. You're gonna wrap it around at least three times, which is what you typically use on hair.
There we go. I'm back. So let me talk a little bit. I know the video clip was really difficult to hear. So this was our senior English class, our specially designed instruction senior English class, and they were doing a segment or a unit on public speaking. So even though it's a specially designed English class, we try to, the students all do the same as the gen ed students do. So as part of it, we did sports and literature in the fall, and now they're doing public speaking. So the student was teaching the other students, which was interesting because it was all boys. She was teaching them all how to grade. And through that video, she was giving them positive reinforcement and encouragement, just like her teacher does. So at the high school level, we continue to provide the specially designed instruction in all the same domains as all my, as all the other levels. However, we do have a greater focus on independence in the student's goal for post-secondary life, whatever that may be. One of the goals that most of the students at the high school have is to earn their high school diploma. So to assist the students in this goal, we provide specially designed instruction in the academic areas along with MCAS remediation. These classes will emphasize on comprehension, skill development, self-advocacy, and academic vocabulary building. The students that you saw in the video are all rather excited because most of them will be going on to post-secondary education in either a community college, or one might even be going to a four-year college. So we're really proud of what we do at the high school so that the students do come out with, most of them, a high school diploma. Back to Sandra.
So I think one of the takeaways we'd like you to, to, to take away are that students build on skills that they learned, began to learn at preschool, then on to elementary, then middle school and high school. They develop skills in independence, social interactions, academics, and communication. It was very touching because Diana Par got to see on a video clip one of the students that she had in preschool, now at the high school, actually developing all of her skills, and she's done a really awesome job. And it was, it was heartwarming, I believe, that you said, Diana. The continuity of programming through, through all the levels is so important because if we do it differently at each level, then the students do not have any traction. They're, they're having to change sets as they move from one level to the other. So we constantly talk about the continuity of programming from preschool all the way through high school. And again, like Pam and everyone else has said, our students in special ed go on to either adult services, they go on to work, two-year colleges, or four years. They do an awesome job. So, work finished. If you have any questions for us, we'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you for an excellent overview of what we are doing in special education from preschool through high school. Committee, do you have questions? Who would like to start? Brent, Rob? Questions?
No, again, I don't have any questions. I am so thrilled that we have you all working in our, in our district. We're so lucky. The few, the few of you that I've had the wonderful opportunity to meet, I've enjoyed getting to know you, and I've enjoyed listening to everyone else tonight. So please extend my gratitude to your colleagues because we are so fortunate to have you.
Thank you.
I certainly second what Rob has to say. Does anybody else have any questions or comments for the team?
I think I would just, I would echo what Rob said and thank everyone. I hope the people that are watching in, in the town realize the thought and the planning that goes into analyzing and understanding the students and then developing the skills for, for their success. And if you, if you see the PowerPoint, if you paid attention to the PowerPoint, the skills kept repeating themselves through all the grade levels so that you build upon one set and it's reinforced in different ways through the continuum. And that, and that's critically important. And the, the effort and the time put into being attentive, very specifically to each individual child, and then putting it together in classroom form, is really quite difficult. So, you know, I hope everyone understands that what goes into this in, in what's been shown to us and the videos that are shown to us, I actually think there's gonna be a whole nother step where we're gonna go in the next month and a half, by the way, too. So that's a whole nother realm. But just truly, thank you to all of you. Thank you for your leadership and guidance in your buildings, for monitoring that with the staff in the building that really kind of makes it happen in the hands of the, of the students. So thank you.
Very well said, Richard. Very well said. Sandra, I just want to thank you for your years here, and we will miss you greatly. You've done such a wonderful job with our, our Student Services Department throughout the years, and certainly you have left it in very good shape for our future.
I'll be leaving you in good hands. They're right there in front of you. I mean, they are.
I know, absolutely. I also did want to say, in our school committee packet, under informational matters, Amy included your, your memo on what our special educators are doing during this. You've really had to pivot and go above and beyond in so many different ways to reach out to our students during this timeframe. And I want to thank you. I don't know if you'd like to speak a little bit to that this evening because I know a lot of people are very appreciative of the efforts. I've run into several parents, you know, while keeping social distance, who have said that they, they've had, they've had their, their teacher, their coordinator, Kim, Pam, reach out to them, and it, it's so meaningful. So if you could just speak a little bit to what you're all doing right now during this pandemic time.
What the most important thing is that we've worked as a team with all of our staff to make sure that the continuity of how we're rolling this out from preschool to elementary to middle to high school.
Yeah.
One is it's consistent, and it really is, we're rolling it out first. First, the gen ed is rolling theirs out, and then we're rolling it out afterwards so that we don't overwhelm either our parents or the students or our staff. We just want to see what is sustainable and what, how can we make this work so we're not stressing the families out.
Absolutely.
So I'm gonna ask each, I'm gonna ask Diana Par to start and talk about what, what's happening at the preschool as we're doing this remote learning.
That would be great. Thank you all.
So, at the preschool level, we're really focusing at this point about the social-emotional piece to it all and the trauma piece because this is traumatic. Why can't we, why can't we go to school? And it's difficult for the kids to understand. You know, some of the assistants that we have, and even the teachers, we're with these kids for a good chunk of the day. They're their at-school moms, so to speak. And their comfort and their safety, and that's gone, and things are different at home. And things can't be as structured at home with parents working and siblings there. So our main thing at this point has been really reaching out via different, a classroom app that we use, ClassDojo, and really emailing the parents and making videos of ourselves, doing little mini lessons. You saw what we put on for, on the district website as some ideas to do at home. But in between all of that, we're making videos. We're reaching out to the kids. We've set it up so that the parents can get in contact with each other. And that safety and that well-being, and what parents have and what parents need and what kids need. In addition to behind-the-scenes of all those activities, the therapists are reaching out as well and adapting the activities that we've put forth so that the kids that have deficit skill areas can get support to be able to join those same activities at home.
Well, we really appreciate all the efforts, definitely.
Rose, do you want to go next?
Sure. So the, at the elementary level, we've really been focusing this week and the, and in the coming weeks on how we can accommodate and modify what the general education teachers have put forth as learning plans. We've been working closely as special educators, related service providers, working with those general educators to reach out to families with those modified and accommodated plans. We're also really encouraging our families to, our, the providers have reached out to them and that we would love for them to reach back out to us with any questions that they have, any concerns. We're happy to provide different instruction to some of these, these lessons that have been provided by their regular ed teachers. If they're struggling with something, reach out because we're more than, more than happy to help you work through those problems because we know it's very overwhelming for young children and for parents who are trying to work as well at home.
Thank you, yes. That's very helpful.
One of the Kims want to go next?
Kim, do you want to?
Um, at, at the middle school, I mean, we're similar. I mean, we're really trying to all come together as a community, a school community. Again, with the special educators, meeting with them regularly, trying to support them and help them to help families and students to accommodate and modify the work. Our mental health team, which I know is not special education, it's for all kids, but I think it's critical in terms of how we are supporting kids in our building, how we're trying to support staff in our building. We are also, and have been meeting and plan to meet on a regular basis with paraprofessionals in terms of how, how they can be helpful, what, what instructional assistance, I mean, in terms of what they can do, reaching out to families, reaching out to students, and having a lot of discussion around how we can support kids and families in this very, very trying time. It's a very anxiety-provoking time. We've never done this before, any of us. None of us have all of the answers.
Right.
But I think that collaboratively, we're really, as a building, you know, Karen and Tim and John and, you know, everyone, all of us together have pulled together. So, Kim, I'm sorry, you want to add?
No, you did a nice job, and I echo really what everyone else has said in terms of making sure that our kids feel supported first and foremost, and, you know, whatever that means, making ourselves available. And that's our priority. And then the continuity of care from preschool all the way up to high school that we're consistent, that we are delivering the same message, of course tailored for the individual levels and grades. But it's been remarkable that we're all marching forward, we're united, and in, you know, our fourth week, we have come together so quickly, and I, and I, I feel fortunate being in this district. So I hope our families feel the same way, and our students.
Thank you, Kim.
And I, if I could just add one more thing also that we're trying to do with going back to the, the sub-separate classrooms. We do have sub-separate classrooms across the district, and we're looking at ways to individualize, but also as a program in the sub-separate programs, what type of things, what type of software we can use and what type of programs that we can use to really try to tailor to the needs of those students. Where it's a process, and we're, we're initiating it, but Sandra's been supporting us in trying to look at what might be most helpful for those students in those programs. So I'm sorry if I said too much, but I just wanted to add that piece.
Oh, it's very helpful, thank you.
But, so thank you.
And Pam?
And, you know, at the high school, we also are doing everything that everybody else has already spoken about. We have the luxury, I guess. We have, most of our special ed teachers are also involved in a specific department, so they're working very, very closely with the general education teachers. Our educational assistants also are in many of the classes. So together, we're all on teams. They're all affiliated with classroom teams. The educational assistants are providing additional notes and working with the teachers. We're all reaching out. I just want to go back to first and foremost. The first thing we did, of course, is we all made contact with all of our liaison. The liaisons all reached out to all the parents and to all the kids, and we continue to do that. Within our programs, our social-emotional program, our PAVE programs, we're doing ACT Labs, but in the sense of more of check-ins with the kid, providing them, like, for example, in the team program, we're providing strategies for anxiety and stress and management. We've given them planners to help them figure out what to do first. You know, and, and just trying to be there in all aspects. And again, rolling out more, as you saw. Our kids are, even our, all levels of our kids are doing academics, even our secret classes, which is, are the kids that you saw in the video. So we're, we're just plugging away. You know, of course, at the high school, as you know, you, some of you have high school students. You know, there's a lot more goes into it. What about my credits? What about my grades? What about graduate? You know, all of those things. So it's kind of a different animal up there, but I think we're, we're all working collaboratively to just make it as easy as possible for, for everyone involved.
Thank you, thank you. And thank you, sorry for the detour there, but appreciate it, Sandra.
It's evolving and fluid, and so we don't know all the answers. We're gonna have to take it one step at a time. But that's what we've been focused on at all levels.
Thank you. I really appreciate that information. I'm sure the committee does as well. Does anyone have any more questions or comments for the panel before they go? I see you, Brent, up in the corner.
Yeah, oh, mine was honestly for anybody because you were talking about ensuring a, a nice transition for kids as they go through a progression. And I was actually curious, just, and I'm curious myself, and imagine people at home are as well, if they, if you haven't had children go through the whole system. What does that look like as a kid moves, as a student moves from pre-k to elementary, to elementary, to middle, and middle to high? Like, how do you, yeah, what is your, what is the transition process in terms of special ed in particular?
Yeah, Rose, you want to take that together?
Sure. So, so I think that that process every year really begins long before the transition happens. Can you hear me okay? And we talk a lot between the different grade levels. For instance, Diana and I have a lot of meetings, and then myself and the middle school will have a lot of meetings talking about the individual kids as well as talking with the different teachers between those levels. We schedule meetings between us as departments, but then also with the parents to talk about what, what that will look like for their child as they move on and so that we can pass on all the information that we've gained about these kids over the years that we've known them to the next team. I think that it works pretty well. A lot goes into it every year, but my understanding is it's pretty smooth. I don't know if anyone else wants to speak to that as far as the transitions between the different grade levels.
Sure, I can, a little bit. It might look a little bit differently this year, obvi, for obvious reasons. But, you know, for the middle school to the high school, a lot of times, you know, parents, and I'm sure they're the same way from the elementary to the middle, are terrified of, you know, what it's going to be like at the high school. So I attended every single transition meeting at the middle school last year. I make a point of going. I love to meet the kids. They always come in for the last few minutes. I'd like for them to be able to have a familiar face when they get to the high school. I talk to them about our orientation program that we have through Link Crew, which is beneficial. This year I did add on to our guidance night, program of studies night, and I offered an additional time for parents of special education students to stay beyond that, to be able to answer questions they have about special ed and what that will look like at the high school, and have a PowerPoint that's available for parents as well. So we really do a lot of time, I've already actually met with middle school teachers three times already prior to us not being able to be in school. So we really have gotten a huge jump on it because it's that important to us, Brent, that we make the transition as smooth as we possibly can.
Thanks, Pam.
And I just want to, if I could just add, I think that sometimes when, you know, well said, Rose and Pam, I think sometimes there are occasions where we even have staff who will observe a student. I mean, go to the building of the, of the sending school and observe, talk with the staff, be in the moment, you know, ask questions, seek information in addition to the meetings and the team meetings and the discussions with the parents, but really to... and the discussions with the parents, but really to, you know, get to know the students from afar and some students even to introduce, whether it be a guidance counselor or, you know, a special educator, that there's an introduction and just really trying to do that extra effort, which I believe in many ways with special education being very individualized, sometimes that's a necessity to have an even more intensive transition. So I think that it all levels from preschool to elementary, elementary to middle, and middle to high. I think we have a very, a relatively similar process and relatively effective.
Sometimes we do, well, not sometimes, we always do. Diana, Rose, myself, and the three elementary principals do meet on an ongoing basis because the students may look one way in October and a different way in, you know, April because of, you know, they've learned so much. So we're really very cautious about making decisions about what, you know, if a student should go into a program or not or, or what kind of supports they're going to need in regular ed. Diana, do you want to speak a little more to that?
Yeah, all of those things that everybody has been speaking about happens across the whole district. So everybody's getting to know the kids, getting to know the teachers. The teachers are filling us in on, on things that we need to know about the kids. We do observations. And then in the end, before the actual transition, all of us have team meetings with the families. So even though I'm at the borough school, my preschoolers go out to all three elementary schools. So I go to every building and we have a team meeting with the preschool team and the receiving team. And it usually includes the parents, all the specialists from the next building. So if they get speech language, it will be the preschool speech person and the elementary speech person. So it's kind of the passing of the torch. We usually bring a picture of the, you know, eight by 10 of the, the child that we're talking about so you can put a face with the name. And this follows up and we have a whole plan written out and a summary of that and what the services are going to look like when you leave a half day of preschool and move to a full day of kindergarten.
Excellent.
The, the little nitty-gritty stuff about minutes per week versus the six-day cycle. So everybody, it comes together as a team just before the end of the school year to make that transition altogether after all of this other stuff has been done.
Thank you. Any other questions? Well, this was a very, oh, Brent, sorry. I see you up there.
Sorry, just one more, if only because I, my, people in my household are passing me questions now. This is funny.
All right.
Sorry.
This is new and different, but go right ahead.
A few, apparently, people are wondering. No, when it comes to students who are on IEPs and receiving services, is there a, will one-on-one meetings be possible in the near future?
I'll respond to that. Yes, we're going to be probably rolling those out in maybe two to three weeks. What we're really trying to do is get teachers and therapists in front of students first. And that and making sure that we don't overwhelm anybody. And then we'll begin contacting parents and having those meetings. And we just have to figure out if we're going to be, what platform we're going to be using. We might do conference calls, we might do Zoom. That's still to be determined.
Now, are you speaking for just instructional purposes generally or others, specific meetings? Sorry.
For annual and initials and reevaluation meetings that we've.
Okay. What about in terms of just the, you know, I guess, instructional support? Is that?
Certainly, they can reach out now and by email if they have any questions, sure.
Thank you.
Good question.
I just wanted to tell, you ended, it was the word reaching out that I wanted to highlight for everyone. I think every one of the building supervisors here has talked about reaching out. And so I, I think the best thing that can happen in the special ed world is for parents with any questions to reach out to our special educators. The daily life of a school is reaching out, isn't it all the time? The regular ed reaching out to special ed, special ed reaching out back and forth, right? So that is what the daily life of schools are. Parents aren't always accustomed to that. They might not see it that way, but that's exactly the way I see it. You've all asked people to reach out if you have questions about how better to address your own child. These are the people that work with them day in and day out. So reaching out seems like a great takeaway, a great, a great offer. You guys have offered it, it was your words. But I, I hope, again, whoever's listening or whatever might be printed in the newspaper talks about a line of communication that we are open to our parents to listen and to accept reaching out so we can support them. So people should do it. They should not be afraid of it. They should just not be afraid of it. Reach out and ask.
Well said, again.
That's what they said. They said it on me.
Well said by you, well said by all of our special educators. So thank you so much for, for joining us. Just want to make sure there are no further questions. And Dr. Berdos, do you have anything you want to add?
No, just to really thank all of them, just all of our educators. When I talked about last week, the amount of work and collaboration that has gone on behind the scenes. There are so many meetings and much more now that we're not together. And so that planning is really important in order to provide opportunities for students and to meet their needs. And the connection between the buildings, you've seen that as far as the transition piece. So, you know, we've talked about how they're, they're working even so much harder behind not being able to be face-to-face in buildings and what that entails. So thank you for everything that you've been doing.
Yes, yes, thank you all. Very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
Goodbye.
Night.
That was an excellent presentation.
Yeah, it was very good.
It really was comprehensive. So, moving on in our agenda here, our next item up is the April vacation discussion and possible vote. So, Dr. Berdos, do you want to lead us into this discussion?
Sure. So there's been a lot of conversations from district to district and then within our own district with the anticipated return date of May 4th and April vacation being in the next three weeks from now. And so the conversation has been, we've started a remote learning plan. If we're not able to go anywhere and we're just getting that continuity going and we don't want to lose the momentum. We obviously know that face-to-face with our students is the absolute preferred methodology as far as being with our students. At the same time, we all hear what's taking place across the world and across the United States for sure with school closures and thinking about if we will end up being back in school or not. We don't have the answer to that. There's not been anything that has been stated to us. But in thinking ahead with April vacation being days that we could continue our remote learning plan. So if we were to continue through April vacation, it would provide where we've, we've started in the momentum and the structure, we know that it's, it's very different from being in the classroom, but at the same time, we're, we're providing some structure for students. Knowing that it's the face-to-face, which is definitely the preferred methodology, as I had said before. At the same time, what would be the better route to take in not, in not knowing? So the Foxborough Education Association did survey their staff because that is within the contract for them with the calendar being April vacation. And I will share with you those results that came back. They obviously prefer face-to-face. So let me just say, if, if we were to continue and honor April vacation as it is, our last day of school would be June 23rd. If we continue with remote learning through April vacation, it would not be Monday, the holiday. It would be four days that we would gain back, then that would be June 17th.
Would be the last day.
Would be the last day of, of school. So it's tricky. It honestly really is tricky as far as we don't, we don't know if we're going to be returning back for sure on May 4th. We may not know that before we get to April vacation at the same time. As far as our, our teachers and asking them, 92% of them came back saying that they would prefer to continue with the remote learning plan.
92%?
92% out of 332.
Okay.
Because that was teachers and educational assistants. So from the teaching standpoint, they feel like they're, they're getting the momentum. People are starting to get into a routine and to lose that, then to have to come back to that. But at the same time, there's a lot of conversation too in that we know how much of a strain this is on families, too. There, there's a lot to be said for particularly when you have varying grade levels of students and what we've said before with parents that are trying to work from home. It's just a really challenging time for our families, too. And we definitely take that into account, too. Do you, do you need that break? So that's the question, too.
Okay, just, yes, Bevy?
As a former many-yeared teacher, I would prefer to keep the rhythm going of the learning. If we break it, to bring it back is going to be terrible, very difficult. Right now, the situation on families with two working parents and two to four children at home, it is extremely stressful. But to put those parents and that family into the chaos of having nothing structured at all for the young people to do, I think would be far more difficult. Because by now, they are, the more people I've talked to, they're, they're working in tandem, one will take some. They have their own rhythm set up right now. And to break all that for everybody concerned, I think to recoup and get back on track is going to be extremely difficult, especially if we get a good spring weather. So if I were to vote, I would, I would prefer seeing that we continue on to keep the structure going that we've already provided. Because it's only strengthening. Right now, it's strengthening. Zoom will be back up and more protected. That will be another positive. So if I were to vote right now, I would vote to continue.
Well, I think, I think you're going to get a chance to vote tonight unless there's strenuous objection. I mean, because we don't have another meeting scheduled before April vacation, I'm, I'm hopeful that we can all, you know, come to agreement to vote on this tonight and give our parents some guidance so that they know what to expect and also give our staff some guidance so that they know what to expect. And I appreciate everything that you just said and I, I tend to agree with you as well that there is some value to the continuity and keeping the remote learning going. If we knew for certain that our students would be back in the classroom on May 4th. But we don't and, and we can't know that tonight and we may not know that for another three weeks.
We may not know that until the Sunday, the 3rd.
We may not. And so I, I think there is merit in, in continuing with the remote learning through, through those four days. Just as you said, Monday, May, um, May, Monday, April 20th is a statewide legal holiday. So we would not have any remote learning that day. And I did want to emphasize just before we vote on this that with the Good Friday holiday, as is always the case when we have school and it's a religious holiday, if you choose to not do anything remotely with your children that day, that's okay. That is, that is a family's choice and, you know, you could contact your teacher or not, whatever. But it is, it is a very important holiday to a lot of our, our families in town, Good Friday. And so do not feel pressured to do the remote learning this Friday, but it will count as a school day and there will be remote learning opportunities provided. Back to April vacation week, you know, I just did want to add in that we are going back to school this year before Labor Day. We had voted earlier this year to start on September 1st. Is that right? September 1st or September 2nd? It's the, the week before.
Right, because Labor Day falls really late. And we had had lengthy discussions then about, I completely agree that face-to-face is better, but we also discussed about the meaningfulness of those, those late June days and how sometimes it's not the most valuable time to be in school in terms of, of learning because it, it's hot and it's late in the summer. I mean, late in the, late in the school year. So I, I think there's, again, more merit in continuing the learning in April as opposed to, you know, June 20, through June 23rd.
Rest of the committee?
I'd like to hear from Brent to Rob with kids that are at home and doing the schooling. I'm curious.
Brent, Rob?
Thanks. Yeah, so I also agree with everything that Beverly and Tina have said as well as what the teachers have voted. I think the continuity is very important. I also think, as we just talked about in our special education update, the connection with the teachers and with other students, depending on what type of learning is happening or, you know, any, any of the other, you know, part of the team is very, very important. And to go, to just have started to get a rhythm and then to put that on hold and go back to it, I think is probably counterproductive. You know, I, I, I think that it's, it's the wisest decision is to just continue through April vacation.
Brent, would you like to add in?
I agree. I, I think, I do agree with people's sentiment saying it's hard and, you know, maybe, you know, oh, there's stress and kids need a break and all that stuff. But I think one of the best things in uncertain times and moments is to keep on keeping on and keep going to work, whatever that happens to look like. And so I think stopping for an April break where nobody goes anywhere would be a net disservice to parents and students.
Thank you, Brent. I, I tend to agree as well with what Rob just said.
I agree with what Bevy said, too. From the standpoint of instruction and continuity, it's an easy decision for me in my own mind. That's very easy. What I was torn with, if there's any, any stress from parents looking for a break, are they just going to take the days off anyways? But it doesn't make sense from a continuity perspective. And our teachers are in support of it, 92%, want to just keep on, keep on going.
You know.
We're, we're so into it, it's, if this was maybe 10 weeks into it, maybe I might feel differently, but this is like two weeks into it.
Good point.
So I, I think it makes sense from a continuity perspective. But my mind was torn at first, like, you know, do they need a break or not? They haven't had a break since February vacation, but.
You know, the, the parents have set up their own, own rhythm from, you know, now. And to have students around with nothing to do, specifically, you know, that is going to put more stress on them than if we ask them to continue
I would agree.
the successful things they've learned how to do to this point.
One other thing I would like to add is in our conversations as an administrative team, we've shifted at first because of the great pressure on our staff to learn new things that they've not, they've not been trained for this remote learning, just as no one has. And so it, it's exhausting work because they're trying to plan and learn new platforms and to provide opportunities for students and all of the outreach and the connection and all the extra meetings that they have. So it's a very different type of work. We've seen some wonderful things come out of it, really with, with our teachers and with our students and with our families, but it's very, very different. So there was the thought that if we had that break to be able to give people a chance to kind of catch their breath. But now that we're starting to gain some momentum, people are getting a little bit of structure, the administrative team has all said, we don't want to lose the ground that we've gained.
Well, it sounds like we are all in agreement. Allison, do you have anything you'd like to add to this discussion?
No, I concur. I, I agree with all of you.
Would anyone, Bevy, would you like to make a motion?
I would like to make the motion that we continue our learning through April vacation with the understanding that that Monday is a legal holiday for the entire state. So the next four days, we will continue our education as we are presenting it forward at this time with the understanding that the Friday, Good Friday, we will term a school day, but each family has, for whatever religious belief or custom they have, they may honor that.
Certainly. Yeah, Passover starts Wednesday night as well, so if, you know, need to make family accommodations as well. But I, I thank you for the motion. Would anyone like to second?
Second, I'll second that.
Thank you, Rob. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of continuing our remote learning through April vacation week with the exception of Monday, April 20th?
Aye.
Five, zero, zero. Thank you all and thank you, Dr. Berdos. And thank you to our teachers for participating in the survey because it is always helpful and helps inform our decision-making when we know how our staff feels as well. So I, I think we're 92% of the 332 surveyed were in favor of this. So, I think we're 92% of the 332 surveyed, we're in favor of this, we're headed in the right direction, and hopefully we will get through the next two weeks and be back to face-to-face in May.
I sure hope so.
Let's hope so. Thank you all for your comments. Let's see, our next item, agenda item is the school committee vote to approve the Foxborough Public Schools Policy Manual. This is just, this is a housekeeping matter. Every year, we vote, the school committee votes to approve our policy manual. Generally, we do it in April with any, with the understanding that we are constantly reviewing, revising, and amending our policy manual. And I know we have a couple, a couple of policy items that are still outstanding to work on, and we will, we will get those done before the end of this year, for sure. I'm confident of that, one way or the other, but this is something that we could just take care of this evening. Does anybody have any, anything to add as far as that is concerned? Would anyone like to make a motion to approve our Foxborough Public Schools Policy Manual?
Somebody not on the committee.
Somebody not on the policy.
I guess that's me, right?
Policy committee.
So, I, you're cutting out a little bit of me, Tina, but.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think I got the gist of it. I would like to make a motion that we approve the policy manual for, I did not hear the time period, or is there a time period?
It's for the coming year, the next calendar year.
For the, for the upcoming school year.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, Beverly. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Brett, 5-0-0. Okay, we're sort of a little bit on a delay here. Thank you. All right.
That'd be awkward if I voted against her.
Allison, you're next with the curriculum review schedule?
Yes, so we are originally scheduled for our science curriculum review next year along with our elementary, excuse me, our K-12 wellness. And the proposal on the table is to switch the order of the science, technology, engineering with our actual technology, education, and business. The reason for that is, there's actually a couple of reasons. One, as we get further into our, the work we've been doing in STEM, there is a lot more crossover with our technology that actually includes our hardware, our software, and our infrastructure. So, it seems prudent that we move that one before we get into the science curriculum review. Also, as we've been talking about, although it's probably lost a little bit right now in everything that's going on, but with our, our new strategic plan, our Planning for Success model, technology has really emerged to the forefront of the issues that we want to discuss and really look at. So, having a district-wide curriculum review next year would really help inform that work and that process as we build our plans.
Well, I think the last three weeks have demonstrated.
I didn't want to say that, yes.
Well, I will go ahead and say it.
Thank you.
I think the last three weeks have demonstrated to everyone who is watching the importance of technology in our educational system and our, in our educational plan. So, I have no problem with this. Do you guys have any questions for Allison on the curriculum review?
Makes sense.
It does.
No, it makes sense, and I think we had hinted at this a few meetings ago too. It makes sense. Thank you.
Okay. Could we get a motion to approve the change in the curriculum review cycle? Anyone?
I move to approve the changes to the curriculum review schedule as presented.
Thank you, Brett.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Rob. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the changes to the curriculum review schedule?
Aye.
5-0-0. Thank you. Thank you, Allison.
Thank you.
I think that's, I'm looking forward to hearing all about it.
Yes, thank you.
All right, so this brings us to the other matters part of our, our meeting, and let's see, does anyone have anything they want to start with? Dr. Berdos?
I do not.
Okay. Dr. Mello, I know we had a Zoom meet and greet for our IGO principal candidate?
Yes, it was a site visit. It was different to do it through Zoom and have families interact, and then we also had a time for the staff to interact with Mr. Madden. So, as I reported at the last school committee meeting, we did have two finalists, and one of them actually withdrew from consideration, but we decided to move forward with having our site visit with Mr. Madden. It was extremely successful. I believe he made his, his way onto some Facebook pages and people were excited to meet him, so.
That's what I heard.
Yes, that's what I heard as well. So, I don't know if you want to add anything where we are in our timeline.
So, is what ends up happening once we have site visits, there's reference checking and those kinds of things that take place. So, I would say that we're in that process and that we're moving along as quickly as we can.
Okay, well, thank you for the update on that. Does anyone else have anything to add?
Nothing. Thank you. So far, it looks quite promising.
Indeed. I will just add, Tina, on a related topic in terms of updates, the COVID-19 webpage, each Sunday evening will be updated with the weekly learning plans. The ones for the middle and high school sort of automatically refresh in real time because they're linked to sites, but the ones for elementary pre-K to 4 are static PDFs. So, on Sunday evenings, I'll be uploading those, and if anyone has any technical difficulties, they can reach out to me. I did have a couple of parents reach out to me.
Directly.
Yes, but everything will be ready. Typically, a good practice would probably be to check in on Monday morning as Sunday is still getting the kinks out of getting everything uploaded.
Okay, good to know. Mr. Yugna, can I ask you a question? Bill? Can you hear me? He's muted.
You're muted.
See, can we, you need to unmute, Bill.
You guys are breaking up, so it's hard to hear what you're saying.
Sorry, I'll try to speak louder and into the microphone. Hopefully, I won't deafen anybody at home. So, I was talking to Tony Masali the other day when I went in to sign the warrants, and he was telling how the borough school construction is moving along during this, this period that our students are not in the building. I wondered if you could just speak to that a little bit and let the public know what's going on.
Sure. Basically, they've been able to, under the governor's order as an essential service, construction continues to move along. We've actually taken a few things out of our cycle. We're doing all the drainage work across the front of the school, which was work we weren't planning on doing until this summer, but they guaranteed us that even if we did go back to school on April, I mean, May 4th, they would have the area done that they're working on. So, it's a good thing because we've lost ground in a few other areas, so being able to get time anywhere is very good. I did send Amy, which I know she pushed out, some pictures of the site, and actually, the steel work was going up last week.
Good.
Which is a critical component to our timeline. They had most of the roof joists over the pre-K section, and we're getting ready to put the fabricated steel on top, and I believe this week, they're actually starting on the gym.
It's exciting.
So, again, doing some stuff out of sequence, but to try to get the schedule back online. And, you know, again, as long as everybody stays healthy out there, the project can continue to move.
Excellent. Thank you. I appreciate the update.
That's good news.
It is. I mean, it's a.
It's very good news.
Tiny silver lining that we are able to push forward with some work that might not otherwise have been done during the school year. So, thank you, Bill. I appreciate the update. Rob, Brett, do you have anything else you want to add before we adjourn?
I do. I just want to commend you guys again after our meeting last week or on, yeah, it was last Monday. Jeez, the days, the days all just kind of like blend together right now. I did notice a little bit of inactivity on the behalf of my in-house students and was able to go to the pages that you guys had pointed us to last week and that had been so dutifully filled out by all of at least my son's teachers and was able to figure out what it was that he hunted this plate and was able to share that with him. And I also appreciated all of the other information just in general about what's happening in the district and some of the other resources that were, that you guys had put up there. So, really, really, thank you so much. It was practical in my own particular case, but I think, I, hopefully, people have been taking advantage of the resource because I know it takes a lot of time to pull it all together and to maintain it, but it is a very, very valuable resource. So, thank you again.
Thanks, Rob. Brett, before we.
I'll echo everything Rob said. It was remarkably appreciate, helpful and appreciated by me as a parent. And I also just want to wish everyone at home luck this week. I know we have a lot of families in town who are living apart because we've got medical professionals working in, in the, in the household who are spending time away from their families so they can keep going to work. And I know a few families in town that are unfortunately have tested positive and just keeping my fingers crossed and prayers up for everybody this week in hopes that we can get past this wave quickly.
So, from a scheduling perspective for the committee, our next scheduled meeting is April 27th, and we're working on, I know Janet is checking on the time, there may be another meeting in this room, so we may need to be a little bit flexible on our time, but we will, we'll talk about that going forward. And then May, we may need to, on the 27th, look at our, our May schedule because currently, we're scheduled for one meeting on May 18th, but that was dependent on the town elections and the town meeting schedule. Those will be moved, I believe, until June. The Board of Selectmen is going to decide that next week. Is that right, Jeff? Thank you. So, just, we'll have to think about that because there's really no reason for us to have a single meeting in May. At that point, we, we could probably have two meetings and take care of some business, assuming we are, you know, all back to school and so, but we'll, we will cross that bridge when we come to that, as my mother always says, but in the meantime, April 27th is our next meeting unless something emergent comes up. I did want to ask you, Bill, the BIKO collaborative, you're not going to need any vote from us aside from the consensus we had last week on changing that transportation contract?
Actually, that would be a vote of the BIKO board itself.
BIKO board. Okay, all right, just making sure. So, unless something emergency-related comes up and we need to meet on a, on a special basis, we'll plan to meet April 27th then.
And Tina, I would just say also, just to circle back one more time to the COVID-19 page.
Yes.
All of Dr. Berdos's communications that have been going home to parents, all the archives are there also, so if people needed to go back and refer to information, it may feel like everyone has been drinking from a fire hose these last few weeks, and there is a large volume of information, and you may want to go back and revisit it. And without, you know, us being on camera, you know, next week, it might feel like there's an absence. So, there's, there's plenty of information there that people can go back and refer to.
That is a good reminder.
And actually, I'm glad you brought that up because one of the other pieces is we're trying to find that balance of communication. So, you have the, the information that's been going out from, you know, our district-wide, but then all of the principals have been sending out a lot of information too. We've gotten really good feedback that people have been very appreciative of that, but again, we know that it's a lot of information that's going out to folks too.
And we're trying to be mindful of staggering it, but there's always that occasion where it's going to be more than one thing on a day. So, the idea is to put it up on that site, go back, look at it at your leisure, and be able to process it.
Thank you. And thank you both for all the hard work you're doing on behalf of the kids in our district. Oh, Rob, sorry, didn't see you up there. Yes, Rob?
Sorry. I just had one, can I, am I muted or not? I can't tell. I forgot to also, I also do want to let you guys know, and you can pass this along, I appreciate the notes that we're getting from the principals as well on Sunday evenings. It's a, you know, all the community, I know it takes time, I know it's effort, but it, it just really grounds everything. So, again, that's just another extension and another gratitude from me. So, thank you.
Again, completely agree with you there, Rob. There was, was one cancellation that we should probably put out to the general public that was in Diana's communication to parents, but that is the cancellation of the Pops concert, which is devastating, of course, to our music community, and we'll be sorely missed, but the Pops were scheduled for May 2nd and 3rd, and we won't be back to school in time for rehearsals and preparation for that concert.
Yes, and those, like, I even have students emailing me and asking, particularly our seniors, who, you know, my heart just goes out to them, particularly with it being so many activities and asking questions, and we're just taking it one step at a time.
Right.
So, we know with the Pops, that was before the May 4th.
That was before the May 4th deadline.
We needed to cancel that, but.
Nothing else has been canceled as of this.
No.
But today, just again, sorry, the guidance section, the guidance department added a whole section onto the website with information about SATs, scholarships, anything that might relate, particularly to juniors and seniors. There's a plethora of new information there that was not there yesterday.
Thank you for that. That's good for parents to know, and I know the guidance department is extremely good at reaching out to students via, via their school email. They are always pumping stuff out to the kids, reminders and updates, and so I'm sure that's getting directly to the students, but it is helpful, as Rob pointed out, to know what, you know, what parameters schedule-wise your student has so that you might have some gentle reminders for your junior or senior about registering for SATs or something.
Right. And my last, if anybody else for kindergarten registration and they're not able to go to the schools, we will do that at central office as well.
That's good to know as well, so, excellent.
And I thought I didn't have anything under other matters, but.
Would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I move to adjourn.
Thank you, Richard. Someone second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Bevy. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
5-0-0. Good night, everybody. Thank you. Stay well, stay healthy.
Thank you, Bill.
Stay safe. Thank you, guys, for participating.
Thank you, Mr. Weber.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Weber.
Thank you, Mr. Weber.
He's amazing.